Well, they can make a big announcement about it.
Okay.
So, my people can check it out. Go to the CDC.
I'm gonna have to.
I'm good.
No, I'll be listening.
Yeah, that's great.
I mean, you could do it under, under council report.
But I'll take, well, I'll just, but I'll take my little zoomer.
Yeah?
And show us how lovely it is there.
Well, I don't know how to, I don't know how to reverse it, you know, otherwise you'd see a swimming pool in the water. And it'll be horrible. It's only gonna be eighty degrees and sunny every day.
Oh, I know.
Are you going to Mexico again? I'm sorry.
Well, November and February.
What a problem.
Then I'm getting off to the city, city council. I said city council.
Good evening, everyone. It is six P M. I'm gonna call this September twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two city council meeting to order. Will you all please stand with me to say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, council. I'm gonna take role. I'll begin with you, Councilman Owen.
Yeah.
Councilman McGoffin.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilman Allen.
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca.
Present.
Very good, thank you. I'm looking for an approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman McGoffin, second by Councilman, or by, motion by Councilman Owen, second by Councilman McGoffin. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Thank you. Looking for a motion for the consent agenda, items one through seven.
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion, but I'd like to pull number three for discussion.
All right. Is there a second?
I'd like them.
Okay. All right. And Councilwoman Kestie, do you want to bring that forward now?
Yes, please. Okay, so, Mark, I too am cursed with champagne taste on a beer budget. So I understand liking the best of the best, and I also value quality in staple items such as desk, tables, and bookcases. But I can't justify spending twenty-four thousand, two hundred, sixty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents on chairs alone. You have twenty break room chairs at three hundred and forty-eight dollars a chair, and two wastewater entrance chairs are eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars apiece. I understand that those items fit in the budget, but there's nothing wrong with coming in under budget, and I'd feel more comfortable approving your proposal minus the chairs. I'd like to find another source for those. So that's my thought on that.
Did you want to respond to that?
Well, I, I respect your opinion on that. Our goal with this project was to have a, a decent working environment for the crews down there, and so if you've visited, well, I know you have, their facility down now, they've been working with hand-me-down chairs and basically leftover junk for, you know, all of the years that they have. So, and I had understood the council's desire was that we have a first-class facility down there. We have not bought the most expensive furniture out there. In fact, we bought middle-of-the-range things. The one thing I did do with the chairs is put upholstery on the backs and the seats, and that did add some cost to them. They're not of the level of the chairs we have out here, other than they have arms and these don't. So, chairs, these, all of this stuff is just plain expensive now. It's, it's just the reality of it. And, and yes, we could go down to Costco and buy, uh, plastic chairs. But that's not what I recommend we do for the crews. You know, I, I respect what they do, and I know you all do too, and I think we should start out with some good furnishings down there, including the chairs. There's a lot of them, and they're all the same spec. Because we have, you know, basically two crews working out of the wastewater, the Public Works Building, and so that's the reason for the quantity of them. And in the wastewater building, we have, you know, another crew there as well, so it looks like a lot of chairs, but, you know, we have a lot of people that work in and out of there. The entry chairs into the wastewater facility purposefully have built a conference room in there and want to have a decent entry area there, because we do plan on that being a place that we can bring visitors in to see the facility as we're improving it. We were also looking at doing some partnering with Cedron on some of their things. That may or may not happen, but that was to be a place for them to also bring people to look at the equipment that we're hoping to partner on doing there, so it was purposeful to do that. The first set that came to me was roughly double the price of what we bought, and I'm amazed at the price of any kind of upholstered furniture now myself. And yes, we probably could go down to Ikea and buy something less, but, you know, the state bids program is a bit easier to use than shopping all of this stuff individually, and quite frankly, I've spent a ton of time on this already. I solicited two different state bid on this, and the second one, as I mentioned in the memo, was maybe ten percent higher than this, so I mean, I can go back to the well, but honestly, I kind of value my time too, and I would like to just move forward as, as we proposed it, if that would be okay with the council.
Well, I want to thank you, because I know how much time you are putting into all of this. I just, I, I can't justify the three hundred and forty-eight dollars per chair. I'm not saying we have to get the lowest. I'm not saying we have to get the highest. I'm just saying that's a lot for the break room, where these guys have been using the same chairs for over twenty years. The next step up, I don't think, would be too much to bump us up, but I know it would be under three fifty. That's all.
Madam Mayor, if I may add to that, too. I was a little surprised with the cost as well. Mark, eleven hundred dollars for a love seat, you know, I mean, it just, there is a lot in there for ninety-four thousand dollars. It is pretty high. I think if it was like a business and we were looking at, you know, the cost of profitability and what the business is gonna take in in relationship to how much the product within the business is gonna be and what its service is gonna be, that would probably come down a, a little bit on a, especially this time of year. I know there's a lot of time in there. Is there, is, is that something that you're working on? I didn't know that personally, that you were working on it, because you're a director. I figured that there would be somebody that's shopping for furniture. Also, with appreciation for the crew, is there a way, I mean, we bring down the cost and give them a monetary bonus to say thank you, even, rather than getting, I don't know if that's an option, but that's, ninety-four is a pretty big number. I was kind of surprised at that as well.
Well, I, I'm, I'm not sure what you're looking at. The purchase order is eighty-eight thousand. It's actually a bit less than, and I don't know if there was a mess up in what got finally put in there, but we were still negotiating on this down to the day that I submitted it, and it's possible you might have seen an earlier version of that. I mean, all I can do really is to go back to the well and start again, and I have to caution you about that, too. This, this stuff is already eight to ten weeks out, and I, it's gonna delay our opening of the facility if I go back to do this again, and I literally don't have any more time to spend on this, if I can avoid it. And you, you've pointed out an interesting thing. Why am I buying furniture? I don't have anybody else to do it for me right now. You know, we're all busy, and so this is just something I took on to get done, because I really am interested in this being a top-quality facility for our crews, and I know you are as well, so I do appreciate your sentiments on that, but I would prefer to move ahead as we have it proposed.
So is there a motion to pull this, to have Mark go back and look for less expensive furniture, or are we willing to move forward with what we have?
Well, and to be clear, I was, I, I am completely approving of the, um, the desks, the tables, and the bookcases. It was just the chairs alone of the twenty-four thousand that I wanted to be re-examined for a cheaper price. So it wasn't the whole thing. I was just pulling out the chairs.
Well, I, I know that I can get these chairs for probably about two to two-twenty without arms and without upholstery on them. Now, these are chairs that are meant to last for twenty years. They're, they're pretty tough. In fact, I have a sample over in the office over there, if anybody's interested in looking at them. So, I mean, I know I can cut the price on them, but, you know, again, I take the arms off, I take the upholstery off to do that, basically, is what, what happens with it.
You know, Mark, if I can throw in something, a snippet.
Is your, is your mic on? Is your mic on? Is your mic? Thank you, Councilman.
Okay, not to be picky on you, but this is taxpayer dollars. And so, you know, I, I think, you know, to be a little frugaler, not to be cheap, but to be a little bit more frugal, I think we need to look at it again.
Okay. I could certainly do that.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, go ahead. Councilman McGoffin?
When we purchase chairs for other departments, what's the typical cost? Because it seems like if we're looking for a twenty to twenty-five-year lifespan of the chair, I'm all for getting a chair that's comfortable, that helps them have a good working environment. I understand they've been using hand-me-down chairs, and I'm all for, you know, workplace, you know, the productivity is another component. If they have a good chair, and yes, maybe they're more expensive, but if we're talking, you get a two-hundred-dollar chair with no armrest, like, I mean, there's a difference there. Over the course of a long time, not having a comfortable chair does impact productivity, and I, I totally see the point of the high cost, and I think we do need to be cognizant of that, but if it's not astronomically higher than what we typically pay for a chair, I think that's an investment in our employees, so.
Yeah. Well, I don't buy them every day, so I can't really say, you know, other than what I looked at. I compared the two state bids. KI Furnishings is the, the Katera chairs that are in there. The, that's the same manufacturer as what we have in City Hall here. So you're looking at, this chair out here has a spring back on it, which is a, something that is an add-on, and similar, those, that particular chair there is probably similar in cost for what you're seeing because of the spring back in it, so. Yeah. I mean, what I would likely do, if you want me to do that, is just take those chairs out of the order and buy them. We can go down and buy the, you know, the white plastic back ones, you know, for seventy-five dollars apiece, I'm sure. You know, we'll be replacing them every four or five years, but, you know, that's, certainly we can do that, so.
Are these the break-room chairs that we're discussing?
That's correct.
So it's not an office chair with an armrest? I mean, because you're at your table, you're eating, or you're taking your break. Have you, I mean, do we look at like other companies, Global, Uline, other things like that, that are, I mean, they're generally a hundred bucks for nice break-room chairs, even with some armrests or whatnot, but?
Yeah, there's lots of other ways we can do this, to be sure. You know, we, we try to use the, the contract, the state contracts when we can, because assumedly, they have shopped these against all under, under manufacturers, and that's, you know, supposedly the best deals around. But yes, you're right, you know, these, these certainly are, you know, relatively high prices, I guess, but it is a quality thing, and, and the other, the other manufacturer we looked at was Steelcase, and of course, that's a major supplier for this, and they were more expensive for the same basic chair, so, you know, you know, it's, it's your decision, of course, and we'll do whatever you want, but I'll probably just look at buying an order of chairs from another manufacturer and put that together. We are gonna lose a little time with that, because I won't be available at the next council meeting, but we'll see what we can put together on that. It's likely to delay our being able to move into the building, is what I'm saying. I'll, I'll do my best to avoid that, but, you know, that is part of what.
Councilman Burns?
You know, I have to say, I am a cheapskate. I'm not afraid to admit it, but at the same time, I've learned that I can buy a good quality product once and have it last me for twenty years, or I can buy three for a hundred and fifty bucks and end up spending more money in the long run. So if these are warranted, or if they have a solid track record that you've seen, I'm less opposed to spending that kind of money. I, I still have a hard time choking down some of the price tags on these, but if it's something that we're not gonna keep having to buy, that, that goes a long way for me. And also, your time costs us money as well. We pay you to be here, and when he has to go out and bid or check multiple companies, and we send him back to do it again, that also costs us, so there's a point where we may or may not break even on the process. So I guess I'd say, let us know if there's a warranty on it, if you see it, but.
There's a warranty on these chairs. Again, it's the same quality as you see with the ones in the audience here. It's same manufacturer, so.
And those are quite comfortable for the chairs for their purpose.
And, and that is one difference, as you point out, Councilmember Burns, that these are warranted items. They do have a warranty on them.
It's also an excellent point that if you have something that lasts twenty years as opposed to five years.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I'd have to, for my two cents, I'd have to agree with Councilman Burns and Councilman McGoffin on this situation. I've actually personally been shopping chairs for the business that I work for and finding those, the ballpark range that has been provided is what's out there right now. Costs are going up. And with the, the idea of that this is probably gonna end up delaying things additionally, which will cost more money, there's a lot of time put into this as well. You know, the fact that we won't have to be replacing these over and over again just makes sense to me.
Madam Mayor, Sarah, let me ask you a question. Are you shopping for break-room chairs, or are you shopping for chairs that go out?
Both. Conference room chairs as well as break-room chairs.
I, I, I don't know. I just, I don't know. I just, I'm not really that much, I wasn't that opposed to it before I heard some arguments on it, but it's, uh, these are break-room chairs, for goodness sakes. They're gonna come in, they're gonna be dirty, and they're gonna take a break, and, you know, I mean, does it matter if you have a twenty-five-year chair?
Well, I'd like to add that they're break-room, but they're also for hosting guests. That's correct?
Yeah, when we meet with the crews, that's where we meet, it's in the break rooms, yeah, so. And, and the quantity of chairs that you see in the order is, I've used the same basic chair as the side chairs or the guest chairs in offices, too, so there's, we have three offices in the one building and through, you know, three in the other, so, you know, part of them are that. It's a minority, obviously. We have thirty of these for the break rooms, and then whatever the rest of the quantity, another dozen or so for other, for side chairs in, in the offices, so. You know, if we did change, I'd want to stay with the same chairs we've specified for the offices at least, you know, it makes more sense to do that. And we use those for the entry room into the Public Works Building. That's the side chairs in the reception area for that, too, so, yeah. Kind of dual purpose, yeah.
All right, thank you. So is there a motion on the table? Okay, hearing none, then. We do have a motion for the consent agenda, items one through seven, two, by Councilwoman Kestie, and seconded by Councilman Owen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. All right, so we have special guests tonight from Helping Hands Food Bank, and they're gonna be talking both about the bank and hunger awareness. And before they do, they did send a proclamation, because this month is, the month of September is Hunger Awareness, Hunger Action Month, actually, Hunger Action Month. So how about if I go ahead and read this, Karen, and then after I'm through, you can come forward and give the presentation? Thank you. Okay. So, whereas hunger remains a significant problem in Washington State, and more than one in ten Washingtonians are suffering from food insecurity in our state, and whereas nearly one in six children living in Washington State live in households that have difficulty providing enough food, and hard-working families must make sacrifices, difficult choices between necessities, between rent, food, utilities, and other medicines. And whereas Helping Hands Food Bank represents a countywide effort to feed the hungry, made possible by generation, by generous contributions of individuals, civic organizations, local government, and businesses, including more than ninety-seven thousand volunteer hours donated in twenty-twenty-one. And whereas Helping Hands Food Bank provided food to a hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and nine visiting community members in Sejro Wully area, and four hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and eighty-four visits in Skagit County area as of twenty-twenty-one. And whereby Helping Hands Food Bank distributed three million, six hundred thousand pounds of food via its four public food distributions and multiple partner agencies in twenty-twenty-one. Whereas a monthly donation of seventy-five dollars can support ninety families a year through the buying power of the food bank. And whereas National Hunger Action Month is a Feeding America effort to raise awareness about the hunger epidemic in the United States and to encourage individuals to take action in some form against hunger. Now therefore, I, Julia Johnson, Mayor of Sejro Wully, do hereby proclaim the month of September, twenty-twenty-two as Hunger Action Month in Sejro Wully, and call upon the people of Sejro Wully to learn more about hunger in our nation and the programs which support our citizens. Signed, Julia Johnson. So, thank you. Karen?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson, and council, and other guests. We are grateful to be here today and to just discuss what we do and why we do it, so. Bill has my slides up there. So, next slide, Bill. Today, we're just gonna talk about Hunger Action Month a little bit, what brought us, what brought it up, and where it's going and why we do it. We'll touch on the Washington State statistics, as well as a few county statistics. We'll talk about Helping Hands, what we're doing, and kind of dip into our twenty-twenty-one numbers. And then we'll touch on the future. What does that look like? What are we doing and where are we going? And then I'll take any questions and answer them to the best of my ability. As I told Joellen, I recently joined Helping Hands as their engagement manager in March of this year, so prior to that, I spent five years at Hospice of the Northwest, so it's an honor to continue to serve my community in such an impactful way, so I'm really excited to be here, so. Hunger Action Month was, started in two thousand and eight, and its goal was to raise awareness about the national problem that we have with, with hunger and food insecurity, so they chose the color orange because it stands out when hunger does not. I think we all kind of get that pit-in-our-stomach feeling when it comes to, you know, commercials on TV, whether it's dogs that need our help or humans that do. It's a hard thing to look at and to see, and so sometimes it can be easy to look away, but we do need to raise awareness and talk about it, because there are so many community members, as Julia mentioned with the proclamation, that depend on us because they are experiencing food insecurity. And food insecurity, when we talk about that, can range, you know, from not knowing where you're gonna get your next meal, to maybe your next couple of meals, to a wide variety of other barriers that come with not having food, so. Next. So in Washington State, it's hard to see these stats, I'm sorry, but it's about eleven-five percent of Washingtonians experience some type of food insecurity. I imagine that that is a bit higher than what statistics show. One of the barriers that we face as a food bank serving the community is, is shame, and helping people get over the shame factor of having to visit a food bank. We are blessed enough to be able to, to serve our community with a wide variety of distribution locations, but making sure that it's accessible to all, and that we're doing it, treating people with respect and kindness, providing them dignity, and bringing them in without judgment. In Skagit County, it costs about three dollars and fifty-four cents on average through Feeding America to feed, for a meal, so three fifty-four a meal. As Julia also mentioned, that the buying power of the food bank, Helping Hands is able to do it for about two dollars a meal, so with the support of the community and the way we steward donations, whether that's physical or monetary, we are able to bring down that cost for the community, so. You can go ahead to the next slide, Bill. So, in twenty-twenty-one, we did distribute out of our four distribution locations, three-point-six million pounds of food. If we go all the way back to COVID, when we started March twenty-twenty, it's about twelve million pounds, which is a lot. So if any of you have seen our distribution center out on Fruitdale, imagine how many, I'm not a math person, that's why I do peopling, but you can imagine how many times that building was filled up and emptied and filled up and emptied, serving just our local community. One of the things that makes us really unique is we're a no-barrier food bank, so you don't have to live in Skagit County in order to come to Helping Hands. If someone is willing to come to us, we're willing to serve them, and we don't need any of your financial information. It's really just showing up, asking for help, and we say yes. And as Becky famously is known for, we figure out the how later, so. Ninety-seven thousand volunteer hours, I know that can seem like an astronomical amount, but one of the reasons that number is high is because we do mobile food throughout our county. And when I say throughout our county, I do mean all the way from Rockport, all the way out to Anna Cortis, so if there is a member of our community that has transportation issues, or they are homebound due to medical, or just strictly being maybe elderly and don't get out anymore, we can deliver food to them, so we don't want not having transportation to be a barrier for someone, so we can bring food to them. We also have a great partnership with Skagit Transit, so you can actually get off a ride at our main distribution location in Sejro Wully and freely get on and off the bus, so it's really been a great partnership there. About four hundred and six thousand visits across Skagit County, that is not, those are not individuals, those are visits, so as I mentioned, Helping Hands is no barrier, so that means that if somebody needs to come to our distribution location more than once, they are welcome to do so. So we do have some families that, you know, they, they come on a Monday and they come on a Friday, you know, to help split that up. If we do see a family coming more often, or, or frequent through our distribution lines, Miranda and her team help them, you know, we, we ask, what's bringing you here? What, what other barriers are you facing? What challenges are in front of you, where you're needing to come? How many people are you feeding? What does your family look like? And sort of just digging into them as a person, so. And we currently feed about twenty-three hundred kids in Skagit County per month through our CHOW program, so CHOW is really focused on the child, and it's important, because right now, many kids in Washington State and our county rely on school food assistance as their nutritional value, so we're lucky that we now have a, a grant through the state where kids are gonna be guaranteed that breakfast and lunch, but what they're not guaranteed is dinner, or a snack when they get home from school and their parent is still at work. You know, many of us grew up as latchkey kids, and you came home and you walked in and you had to cook yourself a snack, and so being able to provide things like, that are easy, you know, microwaveable mac and cheese, pop-top soups that you can throw into the microwave, but are still offering nutritional value, so we partner with United Way and Skagit Publishing on that, and it's been a really great program. We're also partnering with different service clubs to help support backpack programs throughout Skagit County, so we're excited about that. The future. We just recently opened. We went from four distribution locations in twenty-twenty-one to now having, getting, gearing up for six. So we just opened a new distribution location in Burlington off Rio Vista, really close to L U and the senior center, so we feel really grateful that it's just a really great location for all ages to access. And then on the sixth, coming up next week, we'll be opening up a new location on the Swinimish side of La Conner, so partnering with Inspired Church, as we do up in Marble Mount, they came to us and said, hey, we're getting two new spaces. Do you guys wanna join us and do distribution out of here? And we said, heck, yeah, we do. So we're partnering with them in their Swinimish area. The Swinimish Canoe Drum Group is gonna do a welcoming song and bring us into their fold, and we're really excited about it, so accessibility is really important to us, and so as gas prices increase, and the cost of groceries, and even chairs, as things go up, it, it's becoming more challenging for people to, and having to make choices of, do I wanna have clean clothes, or do I wanna have a full belly? And we can provide both, because we also do non-food life essentials, so being able to provide. So being able to provide that holistic piece might give the community member the opportunity to pay a bill, you know, and to be able to clean their clothes and to have a full stomach. So we're excited for the future. We're working on being accessible as much as possible and really just trying to meet the community where they need us. So any questions? Joellen?
So would you guys like money so that you can buy the food at a cheaper price? Or is it more helpful to still do the canned drives and the food drives and things?
So all are helpful. Let me just start with that. Anything that anyone does, whether it's your garden surplus, I mean, that is something you can do. It doesn't, you don't have to bring in, you know, five pounds of zucchinis. You can bring in three, and that's fabulous. But to answer your question, you know, cash is king, and that is because of the buying power of the food bank. We can, you know, help purchase things at a different level, you know, than somebody like you going into a grocery store and purchasing a meal. We can do it on a more wholesale level with Feeding America. So about, every dollar is about, equals about 25 pounds of food. So if you think of it in that, in that sense, there is a lot to be had with every dollar that we receive. So, you know, cash is king, definitely, but that doesn't mean that, you know, the Rainbow Girls just did a really successful food drive at Thrifty Food, or at Food Pavilion last weekend, and it's just wonderful to have any of that. So, yeah, but great question.
If you could actually share how people can volunteer?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Volunteering is really easy. You can really, we have a variety of different jobs, so whether it's mobile food, whether it is sorting produce, we do grocery rescue, so meaning we go around to all the local grocery stores, gather food, and then we have volunteers that just sort through it. And then any waste, actually, we partner with farmers in the local community, so that waste isn't going to landfills, it's actually going back, so full circle, sort of recycling slash compost. So there's lots of different varieties of volunteering at Helping Hands. We really don't place barriers on our volunteers. A lot of times, people will say, well, I'm too old to stand there, and I can't stand for long periods of time and sort produce. And we have a volunteer that's over the age of 90, and she sits in her chair on her stool, and she individually wipes down blueberries to make sure that each one is good for our participants. So we've had someone who had, who was legally blind and was able to do data entry for us, which seems impossible, but there is always a way for somebody to volunteer, and volunteers are always needed. So if you have a heart, you can go to our website, to our volunteer page, there's an online form that you can fill out, and we'll find the right fit for you. The other piece to that is that it doesn't have to be a strenuous commitment. So whether you can give a half an hour a month, or you can give 30 hours a month, is, we would just love to have you come in, you know, bring your businesses and do a group project, or, but yeah, volunteering is always needed.
All right, good. Are there any other questions? Councilwoman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Have you seen an increase over the past couple of years? I know we have COVID, I know that we've had inflation, and then also, it's hard to quantify because you're spreading out too, which allows people to have better access. But can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, I think there was obviously a very large increase with COVID. I think we're definitely still above pre-COVID numbers, so we haven't really leveled back out. It's definitely staying above where we were prior to, but COVID definitely saw a spike. I think one of the benefits on our end for COVID was that because more people were using the food banks, the shame factor was lowered. And so I think as we kind of come out the other side, you know, maybe not completely, more people are being able to access, you know, go back to work or access groceries through, through a commercial grocery store. But there's definitely still a need, you know? Even going to a commercial grocery store right now is difficult. I use the example of popcorn chicken for my kids. We buy Kroger popcorn chicken at Fred Meyer. For years, it was $5 a bag. Now it's $9 a bag, which is insanity. And so for people that are on a fixed income, whether that's because they're elderly or because they're a low-income family, I think the numbers have dropped since COVID, but they haven't, but the need is still there and the number is still higher than pre-COVID. Does that answer your question?
Do you have an idea, like, is it 15% pre-COVID higher?
I don't have a number for you, but I could get it for you and get back to the council, absolutely.
Just curious on the levels compared to late 2018 or whatnot, or 2019, and then what we're looking at now.
Yeah, I definitely, I can confidently say that there's an increase from when pre-COVID to now, but, and I don't think we'll go back down, to be honest. I think we'll stay at a rate, but I'll look at the percentage and try to get that to the council, absolutely.
Yeah, Helping Hands really stepped up during COVID. You really did, really mobilized, got the National Guard in here. It was amazing what you did, not just for our community, but for those who came to our community to get foods, that they had to have something to eat. It was fantastic. Miranda, you raised your hand.
Something that I have noticed an increase in is more of our special programs. So pre-COVID, we were delivering probably, pre-COVID, we were delivering approximately 50 to 60 households called our mobile food program, where we delivered to seniors, homebound individuals, and stuff like that. Now we're up into the hundreds of deliveries that we do every week, and that stems from a lot of things, from health to fear to, you know, a lot of different barriers. As well as our CHOW program, we were under 2,000 for a really long time, and now we're skyrocketing again.
How many bags do you actually, backpacks do you deliver to Mount Vernon and Seidra Wully, do you know?
2,300 a month right now. At peak, we were doing 1,500 to 2,500 a week. So it has petered down, but there's definitely still a need. And I think as we expand into the new locations and accessibility becomes easier, you know, we've partnered with some social workers at Allen School, you know, just to start that and keep that going, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, and the Cub pantry that Miranda mentioned.
Yeah, you have a couple of those, don't you?
So we, we have two little red pantries. We have one here in Seidra Wully at the old library, and then we have one at the Parks and Rec Building in Burlington. However, we also support the Cub pantry at the high schools, so there's an amazing leadership team of students that do service work for their community, and they come and pick up twice a week from Helping Hands to keep the pantry stocked there, as well as partnering with other local schools to ensure that the counselors and different staff members there, a lot of times, children, when they're hungry, they can't concentrate on, you know, education, or if you have to go see the counselor, sometimes it's not very good. So kind of having that food to lessen the impact of it has been really helpful. So we're really blessed to be able to support those programs.
We're really blessed to have you in our community.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
Thanks for having us.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, moving on, I'll move on to city administrator report. Charlie?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson and Council. Just one item this evening. Finance Director Kelly Kaufkin has a quick update on the budget calendar.
So we just made some adjustments to the budget calendar, and we'll post it on the website, so easy access to it. Initially, we were going to present some information to the council on October 12th. We're actually going to present some information first to the Finance Personnel and Risk Management Committee on that date, and then at the subsequent meeting, present more information to the full council, as well as have a public hearing. So we're changing those dates just a little bit. That'll be posted on our website. We also left a little more room for one-on-one or, you know, three-on-one conversations. If you have specific questions, you want to meet outside of council to discuss the budget. So again, that'll be posted on the website.
So would there be a public meeting on the 12th when you do the presentation? Will there be two public, or public hearings? I'm sorry, public hearings?
Not on the 12th. There'll be one on October 26th.
Only, okay.
Yes.
Right, thank you. Thank you. And Charlie, is that it? All right. Moving on to council reports, I'll begin with you, Councilwoman Owen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of things. I asked permission to be excused from the workshop on the 5th. My wife and I will be celebrating our 65th anniversary, so I'm going to be out of town. I had a chance to go down to the park yesterday, and of course, I had another birthday, but those people down there are really, really nice, and they take care of the people that rent those places, so.
Yeah.
It was, it was nice to go down there and spend the evening and get a year older. Anyway, I won't, I won't be here next Wednesday, so.
We totally understand. Yeah.
It's been a, it's been a good week for me.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
You're welcome. And does the council want to make a motion to excuse? Go ahead. All right.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, second by Councilwoman Diamond, to excuse Councilwoman Owen from the October 5th council work session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Excellent. Have a wonderful anniversary. Councilwoman Lavaca?
No report this evening.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Right, thank you. Councilwoman Burns?
Well, first, congratulations, Councilwoman Owen and your wife. That's fantastic. I hope I make it even close to that. And thanks to Helping Hands for everything that you do in our community. I really appreciate you guys. You've helped out an amazing amount for us. And another group that has is Family Promise, and they're having their ninth annual Homeless for a Night fundraiser this Friday night at Inspired Church. So if you want to help another great organization, they are out there as well. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
I have nothing tonight.
All right, thank you. Councilman Allen?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I've had some comments on traffic. It's great to see that traffic going back on Township and Moore Street, Highway 29. There was some curiosity on how that is, so I think that we had the plan already in the packet, and it's on the website, and so I've been kind of directing people there. But as far as like the lights and the widening of it, if it's, how that's going to improve traffic. And so there's that. I did go around to the businesses. I know we had that on hold for the CBD, and I didn't get to all of them, of course. I think a couple of people went out and talked to different businesses as well. And we didn't get a flyer, but I just printed it out and handed it to them. You know, I don't own a business down there, so it doesn't matter either way. Their input was that they didn't hear feedback, or they didn't hear about it. I explained the processes on the website and to the newspaper. They were hoping to see a little bit more in that area. And a big concern with them and just residents around is money right now, is spending and having to look at doing more. It's just the times we're in, as obviously you saw with the chicken and the furniture and everything like that. So tightening up the belts or spending wiser was their inputs to me. So I'm not sure if the other council members received any of that input. But, yeah, so just want to let you know, get an update on that, and then, thank you.
All right, thank you for taking the time to meet with them, to do that. And I don't have anything for us tonight either. We have a busy agenda.
Madam Mayor?
I was, I have an answer to your question. Since August, in 2019, we served about 63,000 participants. So with four months left to go, we've seen about a 25% increase in participation. So we're currently serving about 85,000 people. And so with the next four months to go, Becky estimates it will probably be closer to 40% increase, so.
All right, thank you. We will move on now to public comments. It is 6:43. I'll open it up for public comment. Is there anybody on, I'll start with people on Zoom. Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to make public comment? Please give your name and address, and try to keep it to three minutes. I do not see, I do not see any indication that somebody wants to speak. Is there anybody in the chamber here who would like to give public comment? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment, and we will move on to a public hearing. And tonight, we are going to, well, the purpose of this hearing for the city council is to hear the recommended code amendment that would adjust the city's wards in response to the 2020 census. And so the way that we will do this is that, in the order of speaking, will be first, the staff person, and then testimony from the public, if they wish to do that, and questions and responses from the council. So we'll go ahead and begin with the staff presentation, and that will be our city administrator, Charlie Bush.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. We talked about this item previously at our work session and showed the maps to the council that are attached to this agenda item as well. The council was generally supportive of the maps and the methodology that staff used to move the boundaries of the city's wards. And so as we described at that time, we then had the task of creating the ordinance that would actually implement the new system, and that is what you have before you. This is a first read of that ordinance. We're required by RCW 29A 76010 to do a public hearing. So that is the public hearing we're having. We need to hear back from the public, and then we have to wait at least seven days before we can take action on anything. So no action this evening, really here to hear from the public, and gonna just stop it there for now, and if there are questions, we can go into more detail.
All right, perfect. We will move then into public testimony and comment. Did we receive any written comments at all?
No.
Okay, so is there anybody within the chamber here who wishes to make public comment with regards to the redistricting in the city? Ward five. All right, I don't see anybody within the chamber here. How about online, on the Zoom meeting? Is there anybody? Just raise your hand or unmute your mic. Okay, I do not see any, so we will move on then to questions and answers for our council members. Is there any questions or answers or comments by the council that you would like to make?
I just want to say, thank you for taking the time to do that. I know that that's also, you know, another thing on the massive plate of things to do. So, yeah, good job.
Yeah, thank you. Just quick credits to the folks who worked on this. Julie Rosario in Public Works, David Lee in Public Works. We had some help from the county as well. So kudos to all the staff that worked on.
Okay, any questions, answers for anybody else? All right, hearing none then. We will, as Charlie said, this is a first read, and we do need to wait seven days, so no action tonight, and so I will close our public hearing. Moving on now to unfinished business, we will begin with the renewal of the interlocal agreement with Skagit County for community court. And I do believe, I see Judge Housen online. I don't know if she's going to be presenting this, or if it's going to be you, Charlie?
Yeah, this is the second read, and we did receive a question at the last council meeting from Councilor Lavaca. I provided a couple of email responses that Judge Housen provided. They came in after the packet, even after the revisions to the packet, but they were in your inbox. Judge Housen very graciously agreed to be on the Zoom call as well to help with any of that. But essentially, the nature of the emails were, she sent us a national study about community courts and the results of community courts, the money they save and the people they help. The statistics were pretty significant. I believe the number, Judge Housen, correct me if I'm wrong, was something like $4,500 per person engaged in community court. That was a large national study that was done. That's how much money was saved in the criminal justice system. And then also, she provided some additional local statistics. As you'll recall from her presentation, we didn't have a lot of data yet for Seidra Wully because this is a relatively new program, so it's hard to take away significant, you know, observations from that. But there are some great individual success stories so far, and certainly, our recommendation is continuing the program. And there are, there is some more data within the region. Judge Housen, I don't know if you've got anything further you'd like to add at this Not sure if she can, if she's out there. Perhaps she isn't. I can't see from across the room, but it sounds like she is.
Well, I see her, I see her on Zoom. If she's trying to say something, she's muted, just FYI.
Bill, any chance you can unmute her?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. Charlie, can you, is it possible to take your mask off when you're speaking, please?
No problem. Okay, so with that, yeah, we're really here for action at this point in time, if the council's so inclined.
So this is the second read, so is there anybody who would like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement? So, uh, this is the second read. So, um, is there anybody who would like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute an inter-local agreement with Skagit County for community court services?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second that.
All right. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Diamond, seconded by Councilwoman Burns, to authorize the mayor to execute an inter-local agreement with Skagit County for community court services. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Moving on then to the second, really the second part of this, which is, uh, the probation piece. So, Charlie?
Uh, once again, probation, another, uh, renewal of an inter-local agreement with Skagit County. Uh, this one, you'll recall, the, uh, the cost did double on this one, but that's because there was not an adjustment for a very long time, uh, to the, um, fee that was charged. Uh, and probation is a required service, so it's something we, we need to do. The county's the primary provider of that service in the region. Uh, so our recommendation is, is approval on this, and, uh, there were no questions at the last discussion the council had.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilwoman Diamond, seconded by Councilman McGoffin, to authorize the mayor to execute an inter-local agreement with Skagit County for probation services. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. All right. And thank you, Judge Housen, for being on board here. Moving on then to the Union Cemetery Municipal Code update, Ordinance 2019-22. This is the second read. Um, and I believe, are you gonna handle this, Mr. Freiberger? Okay?
I will try.
Okay.
So this is the second reading. Uh, this came to you the last time when we discussed it. Uh, the actual ordinance was prepared by Nikki Thompson. I don't believe she's available tonight, if you have any questions on the legal side of it. But it's basically house keeping, and cleaning up the code, uh, to modernize our, our cemetery ordinance. And, and so we would recommend, uh, your, your, uh, action on this tonight.
Okay. I also see from, from Nikki's office is Noel Treat, I believe it is. Good evening, Mr. Treat. How are you?
Uh, Legal Counsel with Thompson Gildner Law Firm. I'm standing in for Nikki tonight, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to try and, uh, answer those for you.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. So any question? Yes, Councilwoman Kestie?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank Mark and Nathan and Nikki for their hard work on this. As someone who spends a lot of time out in the cemetery, these are, codes are going to be amazing. So thank you for all your hard work.
You're welcome. I'll pass that on.
Madam Mayor, are you ready to entertain a motion on this?
I am, if the council is.
We'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2019-22.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Allen, seconded by Councilman Owen, um, to approve Ordinance 2019-22, um, the municipal code regarding, uh, Union Cemetery. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Treat, for being here with us tonight. Appreciate it. All right then. Um, quickly moving through our list here of unfinished business. Number four is the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Updates. Mr. Coleman?
All right. Thank you, counsel. Excuse me. So this is the long-awaited updates to the comprehensive plan of, uh, the Cedar Wully Municipal, uh, sorry, the Cedar Wully Comprehensive Plan and the municipal code, uh, as well as the master fee schedule associated, uh, with these changes. So what happened was first, the Planning Commission spent about, uh, several months working on updates to the comprehensive plan. Uh, we have changes, uh, recommended by the Planning Commission to the transportation element, to the land use element, uh, addressing source control issues. Uh, the capital facility, capital facilities element, which addresses, those changes address source control, and the proposed, um, school capital facility plan, uh, which can be, that, that is a separate document passed by the school board last year. That's on page 216 of your, of your packet. And then we needed a separate ordinance to talk about, uh, the associated changes that would happen to the municipal code. So, uh, Ordinance 2014 is to, for the comp plan stuff. The Ordinance 2015 is for the municipal code updates associated with those changes. And the municipal code changes are to Chapter 1336 and Chapter 1340 to address, uh, source control, which is a stormwater issue. And then changes to 1560 of the municipal code to update language about park impact fees. And then, uh, Chapter 1564 to move the school impact fees from the municipal code to the master fee schedule, which somehow got missed in the master fee schedule update. Uh, but we kind of anticipated that might happen. Somewhere along the line, the master fee schedule was such a big to-do that it, um, uh, something was surely going to be missed, and sure enough, we found one pretty quick. Uh, so we're gonna fix that here. And then, act, then the third thing that the council's being asked to, uh, pass tonight is the actual, is a resolution amending the master fee schedule to, um, put the, make sure I say this right, uh, the, the impact fee changes, the values into the resolution and no longer be in code. The updated impact fees are for, um, in, in chapter, or in Title 17, or, uh, Title 15 of the municipal code. So that's on page 320 of your packet. I'm sure you're following along, scrolling through, finding all of these references. So hopefully this is making sense to you. This is a fairly, uh, large packet item. Uh, I recognize it goes from page 101 to 345. Uh, so I appreciate everybody's patience in reviewing this. I believe this is probably the fourth or fifth read that the council's had on this now. Because of its complexity that I just tried to describe to you, that's why we pulled it off the last council agenda, because something wasn't perfect. Um, but I believe it's perfect now. And so we're asking for the council to make three motions tonight. One, to make a motion to adopt Ordinance, uh, 2014-22, uh, to adopt proposed amendments to the transportation element, capital facilities element, and land use element of the comp plan. And then also make a second motion to adopt the proposed Ordinance 2015-22, to adopt amendments to Chapter 1560, Chapter 1336, Chapter 1340, Chapter 1564. And, um, then to make a third motion to approve Resolution 1102-22, amending the master fee schedule to amend the school impact fees and the park impact fees. So if you have any specific questions, I, I didn't delve into any of the specifics of any of those items. Uh, that was just trying to get through the process of what's being presented to you, and that probably took 15 minutes. Sorry about that. But I didn't go on too long, I hope.
I thought that was very concise.
Okay, thank you.
I thought it was great. Yeah. Nicely done. Yeah. A lot of information. And it was a lot of reading. I'm just gonna say.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It was good nighttime reading.
Can I ask John a few questions?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Councilman Allen.
John, uh, you know, I, I just had one question, not on what you have in here. Why are we so involved on school bonds? Is that because we are the enforcing agency or collecting, collection agency, or, uh, it seems like we're spending a lot of time doing school board work, you know?
Are, are you referring to the school impact fees, not school bonds? So, okay, yeah, um, yes, I can explain that. The, so the school district determines how much they need to collect in impact fees to, uh, accommodate the 20-year planned growth of students. So that's, um, only for capital facility improvements, so like new schools, classrooms, and, uh, infrastructure associated with new student bodies generated by new growth. It isn't like deficiencies, uh, it isn't, um, staffing. It's, uh, it's for capital facilities only. So they do all, they, their capital facilities plan, like I said, uh, is on page 216. And that's, it shows the math of how they came up to that number of, like, why they need to collect as much as they're proposing to collect. Um, and that's included, uh, in our capital facilities element of the comp plan, uh, as well as, you know, their own standalone documented. But because we're the entity that, uh, issues building permits, we're the ones that collect the impact fee on behalf of the school district, and we're just a, we're just a, a pass-through entity. So we receive that monies, and then, uh, we put it into an account that goes to the school district. We do collect $35 per building permit where we do that, uh, for, to cover our administrative costs. But that is why we've also recommended that we don't make any changes to what the school district has, um, determined that the fees should be, because they've done the hard work of determining what it is and proven it mathematically. Um, we're just a pass-through entity.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I'd like to thank you for all the hard work on this, uh, comprehensive plan. I know it's a lot of work. And when I first read through it, joining the council, I was really surprised on how much thought goes into these. Yeah, and, uh, you know, as you know, I was concerned about the adding in the lid or requirements, and I had a great conversation with David, our, our city engineer, on that, which was awesome. And, you know, we get a lot from the state, and I, I just don't like regulations myself. Um, in the plan on Section 2.12, Paragraph 2, it talks about the growth of the city, which is, you know, uh, right now about 12,000, but planned to be toward, uh, 17,000, but 15,000 by 2025. That's on page 252. Um, so just to, you know, we get a lot of concern from residents about growth, and this growth, I don't think we'll make that, of course. But it's not substantial when you look at the charts, and it's, it's something that I don't think we see a lot of the charts data, and I think that visual really helps people, because when they're around it, they, they feel this spike. But when you're looking at the plan and you're, you're driving the numbers, uh, in 2015, we had 10,000 people. And by 10 years, anticipating that, that growth to be, you know, another 50%, not really reaching that, kind of shows you that, just for, just setting the city, communicating with the city from up here, that it's not a substantial amount of growth that is really taking the city in a different direction where you're, where you're looking at it. From the way I've looked at it and, and done my research, I know that me and you have gone back and forth about it and whatnot, and growth in the city and the council and everything. But I just wanted to point that out to the residents who maybe didn't get a chance to, to read that section, or read through the entire thing, or lose some of the paragraphs that are in a big plan like that, and that's an important one for the city to consider. So thank you very much for all your hard work on this, and the impact fee increases seem very reasonable for that growth. So really appreciate that.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So do we have a motion? And this would be a motion to adopt the first one. Uh, proposed amendment to the transportation element, capital facilities element, the land use element, and the comprehensive plan to address changes in transportation needs, adopt the updated, updated school district capital facilities plan, and address source control per Department of the Ecology. That would be Ordinance 2014-22.
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right. Thank you. So we have a motion to, um, accept Ordinance 2014-22. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, uh, to the second, um, so a motion to adopt the proposed amendments to Chapter 15.64 of the Cedar Wully Municipal Code to amend the school impact fees, Chapters 1336 and 1340 of the Cedar Wully Municipal Code to address the source control per Department of Ecology requirements, and Chapter 15.60 of the Cedar Wully Municipal Code to amend the park impact fees, Ordinance 2015-22. Do I have a motion?
Madam Make, Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adopt Ordinance, uh, 2015-22.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman McGoffin, seconded by Councilwoman Kestie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. And the last one is a motion to approve Resolution 1102-22, amending the master fee schedule. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Allen, um, to approve Resolution 1102-22. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. And, um, I don't know if you saw, I hope that you saw, it was sent out by our IT director, Bill Chambers, that we were, we had, we had an adjustment in our agenda, and, and the, one of the things that we added was number five here, which is amending the Cedar Wully Municipal Code 1044-020 to remove certain parking restrictions on Nelson Street. This is Ordinance 2020-22. This is the second read. Um, Mr. Freiberger brought this before you, uh, last week, or at the last council meeting. And, um, Mark, did you want to address it again, or?
So, yes, indeed, this is a, a second read, and, and it's a pretty simple matter. Uh, as I discussed last time, uh, the school district had requested that we restrict parking on this stretch of Nelson Street, and now they're requesting that we take away that restriction. Uh, we don't see any problem with it and think it'll actually help with the area, uh, and enforcement has not been done anyway. So with your, uh, motion tonight, uh, we would recommend your motion tonight, uh, then we'll instruct our, uh, Streets Department to remove those signs.
Okay. Is there any discussion regarding this? Yes, Councilman McGoffin?
Um, I just had one question that came up. Sorry, didn't have a chance to ask it before, but, um, being a previous student there, I know when you're coming out of the parking lot, when those streets were clear, it was really easy to see up and down Nelson. Um, is there gonna be some space from where people park to where that entry exit is, so there's not any accidents?
Well, I'll take a look at that. It really wasn't brought up during the whole discussion, uh, but we can take a look at that and see. We can always put a Jersey barrier down to, uh, restrict the last 20 feet or something like that. So just physically do that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Questions? All right. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve that.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Lavaca, seconded by Councilwoman Kestie, to, um, approve Ordinance 2020-22 to remove the certain parking restriction signs on Nelson Street. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. I realize that that was, that came on late, but we did, we did have it before us at the last council meeting. Moving on to new business, and here we have four, um, um, well, I'll just, I'll let Mr. Freiberger take them. I do know that he's looking for action tonight, which is what I was gonna get at.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize for the volume of paper that you're, you're accosted with tonight, but, uh, we've had a lot of things going on, on this particular project, and, and they've just come down at the same point. And, uh, we are getting very near to being complete. Uh, we're looking at substantial completion on the project next Thursday. And, uh, that will, uh, hopefully result in a certificate of occupancy where we can start moving in, once we have the furnishings and stuff in hand. Uh, we're, we're already doing some preliminary stuff. Woody's been working on, uh, getting the cameras hooked up and those kind of things, and, and so moving along well. And, uh, we do plan to have an open house on the facility after we get the furnishings in and get the crews in, so you can look forward to that, probably in November, maybe first of December. And, uh, so that's coming up. So the first item for your consideration tonight's, uh, number M, uh, Point 1. And this is, um, Amendment Number 8 for approval for, um, our architect, Carletti Architects, uh, their contract for designing the wastewater treatment plant lab ops in the Public Works buildings. Uh, basically, Carletti has been working, um, uh, on this project, oh, for three years now, uh, putting this together. This is a cleanup, uh, amendment. Uh, I've had them do a lot of things on this project, just imagine. The other three items you'll, we'll be talking about tonight are all the changes we've been bringing forward to, uh, basically improve, uh, not just the two buildings and their adjacent area, but also to prepare for the future, to add the vehicle storage building, uh, once we achieve funding for that. And so in the course of doing that, Carletti's thought for quite a while that they could fit it in with their budget they had, but, uh, I, I was pretty skeptical of that all along, and we got down towards the end, and there were just a lot of things to do. There's been 44, uh, separate change actions on this project. A fair number of those were associated with things. A fair number of those were associated with things that the city requested. They were not things that were errors in the plans or anything like that. It was our effort to get everything we could built down there with the present project. And so that, that involved a lot of architectural time, and our time as well, and then the actual construction cost of those things. So this, this particular amendment just brings their contract up to date for the work that they've actually already completed. And then it allows some budget for the closeout of this, the record drawings and the last little bit of review work that we'll be doing. And once, once we do finish the job, Carletti's contract will be done, and we'll close out one that's been in place for three years. So I would request your action tonight to approve amendment eight to Carletti's contract, twenty eighteen PS twelve.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Lavaca. Did you have? Okay. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion for that approval of the Carletti contract.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. All right. Is there any more discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion to authorize Public Works Director Mark Freiberger to sign the amendment eight to the professional services agreement with Carletti Architects in the amount of thirty-three thousand five hundred for a new agreement for a total of five hundred two thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to the next item, Mr. Freiberger, the proposed change to order thirty.
Okay. So this is item M point two on your agenda. And this is basically approving three proposed change orders. And I wanted to give you a little background on this. Back in July, the twenty-second meeting, I brought to you a proposed change order thirty, which was to do the work to basically grade and pave the areas that are south and east of the new buildings that we're doing, and to build the pad for the future vehicle storage building, which I mentioned a moment ago in our discussion on Carletti. At that time, we didn't have the hundred percent plans on that, and I mentioned to you during that presentation that there was a fair amount of work we anticipated to come back to you afterwards to finish that work. And I actually had preliminary estimates in the memo, which were not captured in the, the seven hundred plus thousand dollar change we did at that time, that we knew were going to come. And there were three items, and they're actually represented in the three proposed change orders you see here. The first of them, PCO thirty point one R one, and the Rs just symbolize the fact that Mark's been busy negotiating these things as we go along. We went through several generations on this before it was satisfactory to me. This, this work was covered in our July twenty-second memo, and we'd estimated the work would be somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty thousand dollars. And that was for things like, we didn't have a final design for the sewer system available when they bid that particular PCO. We basically had to re-align that from what they bid on. Instead of coming due south, we had to run around the future building site, added a manhole, added a hundred and sixty-six feet of pipe. We didn't have the final specs, or the pricing for the stormwater treatment vault that was going in as a part of the system. And that was quite an expensive device, and so things like that, and they added up in the end to seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. Nothing controversial about that. Thirty point two, I also mentioned in the memorandum that we, we knew that there were unsuitable soils that were going to have to be taken out and filled back in with suitable materials. I'd estimated in that memo that that would be between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars. My preliminary estimate was six hundred cubic yards of material, based on the soils reports we had done. The actual was six hundred and ten yards, so I was sort of close on that. The price for actually doing the work was less than I thought it was going to be. It was fifty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars. And a part of that was, as we were working with the contractor, when we were excavating material that was suitable as a part of the work to get the site to the right grade, they pushed that, they, they took out the unsuitable material and pushed the suitable material into it. So it was quite efficient, and, and it saved a great deal of money. It was about ten dollars to haul off every yard, or every ton of material that we generated that had to go away. And so we were able to capture the benefit of that. And it saved us the import as well, which was, that's, that was about forty dollars a yard for bringing in the additional rock and stuff. So that actually worked out really well. And the final one, thirty point three, we had them excavate for the future building, which is a seventy-five by about a hundred and eighty feet structure that will be built when we have funding in the future, which I'm estimating will happen no later than when we do the plant upgrade, but possibly sooner. We're going to keep looking for the, the funds for that over the next few years. And the, the contractor actually, in their estimate they sent to us, they actually said this cost was due to a scale bust, and that wasn't really true. What it was is, there was a scale error on the plans, but it wasn't germane to the thing, to the situation. It wasn't the contractor's mind, because when he gave me his preliminary estimate, he did measure it at half of what it really was, and he gave me a number. But Mark had done his own estimate, and I knew that he'd made that mistake. It didn't really matter. So what they did is they excavated out to thirty inches rather than fourteen, which was, which is what they bid. And then they filled that in with, with crushed rock and compacted that for that entire area. And the final cost on that was the number you see there, ninety-three thousand dollars. So it was a little more than I thought, but not very much. So at the end of the day, these all add up to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. It's an expense that I was expecting. It's within the budget that we have for the project, as I mentioned back in July. And I did give you a really much more complex, and probably it should have been, summary of the estimated costs. That, this is the same one that appeared in the Carletti one, and you'll see it in the next item, too. Just running through the numbers on how that looks in terms of funding and the actual costs that we've got. And the bottom line is, and I've broken it up by funding source, we have Fund four oh one, which is the sewer project, which we're going to, it looks to me like we're going to come out under budget on that particular thing by about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which is a good thing. Saves the fund that amount of money. And then on the, the Public Works Building, we're also, under the funds that are available for the project, and that was this combination of the four million dollar local bond that we did, plus the seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars that we've accumulated from the funds that Council wisely has been setting aside for this project over the years, that, that we have had in place, that was, we are, had available to support this additional work under PCO thirty. So overall, we're under that as well, and we have somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars that should remain available for the future Public Works work. And as I mentioned back in July, we had hoped to also finish the second floor improvements for the Public Works Building. We had received a price from Faber to do that work for us that turned out higher than our estimate for it. Plus, I was still nervous on moving forward with that, because I knew we didn't have final prices for these three items in this PC, these PCOs. So I'm glad I did that, because we wouldn't have had enough money to do that work. But what we are looking at is, with those funds remaining, I'll come back to you probably in November, and we're looking to, to do that work internally. City forces doing the, the contract management on that, a little bit of the work, and then subcontracting it to individual people like the drywall, the T-bar ceiling and stuff like that, the HVAC. We think we can finish that second floor with the money that's left. And I think that's really good news. A little bit of work to get there, and I want to make sure, close the Faber contract out before I do that. But what it's looking like is, we're going to be able to finish the entire project, and that's a good thing. So, anyway, that's a long explanation for what this is, but I am asking for your action tonight to approve these three PCOs. We'll follow up on these, by the way, as we have on others, with a formal change order, which formally modifies the contract to add this to the contract amount. And you'll see that on the October twelfth meeting. And I'll, I'll basically reference back to this memo. If this has adequately explained things to you and you actually approve these, that one should be a simple one to do. So I would request your action on this tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Freiberger. Are there any questions? Any comments? If not, we're looking for a motion, and the motion would be to authorize Public Works Director Mark Freiberger to sign the proposed change order for zero three zero dash, or point one, RL one, and zero three zero point two, and zero three zero point three, alternative, number two, Public Works facility grading and paving for future building. Madam Mayor, I'll make that. Excellent. Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Diamond, seconded by Councilman Burns. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Fantastic. Motion carries. All right. Mr. Freiberger.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
And continuing in that same line, I'm going to jump ahead, just because it's in the same subject as item M dash four, is similar to what I just described on the process of these PCOs. We had, we had issued under the director authority forty-two thousand dollars worth of change orders that made up a number of PCOs, which I addressed, eighteen, thirty point four, thirty point five, thirty-one, thirty-six, forty-two, blah, blah, blah. And they, they were all change orders that basically I approved under my authority. They were a variety of things. The largest one was a twenty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollar one, which was some changes we made during the design of the fuel island slab. We had to go back to the drawing board on some of those things. Again, the preliminary drawings that the contractor bid on were fairly simple. It was a fourteen by seventy-two foot slab with an electrical service and a water service. When Leo finished his specifications for the fuel tanks that were going to be leasing for this, it was found that we needed a much more elaborate electrical system to, to serve those, plus a card reader system that we want to put in on that. The bottom line is, is I had to go back to the contractor and say, look, we need to have you put all of these additional conduits in. We also added a light pole to that, which was not designed for that, but I felt was necessary to be able to use the facility in the night and in the times of, of an emergency. So that's what these, these types of things, the other ones are all smaller. That's the largest one of the bunch. And so this, this is a change order to actually add to the contract those previously approved preliminary change orders. And so I would request your action on that tonight to authorize me to sign that particular change order number seven.
Okay. All right. So he, he did skip, it's, it's number four that he's looking at here. It's approval of contract twenty twenty-one PW oh two. It's a change order number seven, Faber Construction Corporation. So are there any questions or concerns for Mr. Freiberger? Okay, seeing none. Do we have a, a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by Councilman McGoffin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carries. So going back then to number three, which is for the landscape architect.
So this is a follow-up on an action that you actually voted a couple of council meetings ago for the final design for Memorial Park. You raised a number of good questions in that meeting. You did pass a request for their change, their amendment eight at that time, but I heard what you said, and I went back to the drawing board and talked to the architect, and we, we really picked that apart. And, and as the Parks Committee members reported to you, we did a revised plan for Memorial Park that removed a lot of the, I wouldn't call it the fluff necessary, but necessarily, but a lot of the hard surface that the, the architect had proposed and the preliminary renderings that you had seen earlier. We, we've come up with a much simpler plan. There's a copy of that in the packet on the last page of this particular item. And basically, we're going to put in sidewalks to support the future playground, the spray park, and we're going to relocate the restroom facility and, and rebuild and, and reseed and sod all of the grassed area now that's kind of worn and tired around the flagpole area there. And I think, I think we came up with a, a, a much simpler plan, it's much less expensive, and our hope is to be able to build the entire project, including the spray park, which we would have had to leave out with the previous plan because of cost, to do that. And so I've negotiated with the landscape architecture firm to, to do the, the simpler design for this, and this is what we're bringing forward to you tonight to approve what is actually smaller by about twenty thousand than you approved last time, so that we can kick off the final design for Memorial Park. And I would request your action on that tonight, if, if you are amenable to that, so we can move forward with this, get this finished, and get it out to bid in the spring, and build this in twenty twenty-three.
Perfect. Love that idea. Questions, concerns? Yes?
I am so excited about this. Thank you so much, Mark. I would be happy to make a motion to approve.
Okay. Madam Mayor, second thought? Thank you. So we have a motion.
I just, I wanted to thank you for going back to the drawing board. It not only means a lot to me and, and I'm sure the council, but also the community members I've spoken to really appreciate you, you doing that. So that's really awesome. And then they also get the splash park in the process, so it's, it's a big bonus for them. And I know that I've reported that back to quite a few people since our Parks and Rec Committee, and they were very excited about that. So getting heard is very important, and, and people really appreciate that, Mark. Thank you.
So I have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. Are there any more questions or comments?
Just a comment. Thank you very much, Mark, for taking the initiative.
You're welcome.
All right. Fantastic. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. So that ends our new business. I do want to point out the information-only items. We do have a great report by the fire department, building impurience, permit and planning, and also by Public Works. So next, we are going to go into executive session. The executive session is to discuss potential litigation pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty one one zero one I. I'm going to say about fifteen minutes. If not, we can come back out and let you know if it's going to be longer than that. So we are now going to move into executive session. Thank you. Yes. Yes.
It will automatically put you in that room. You're muted.
No, I was just soft-spoken.
So you need to join that breakout room when, when prompted?
Bill, is, um, they're doing the executive session for the litigation right now, not the closed session? So I'm not sure that Vance, were you talking to Vance, Bill? I don't know if you can still.
Oh, okay. Maybe not. Okay.
Bill, is, they're doing the executive session for the litigation right now, not the closed session? So I'm not sure that Vance, were you talking to Vance, Bill? I don't know if you can still.
Oh, okay, maybe not. Okay.
They go over their special session?
Yep, and then someone came out and looked around and went back in. We see if I'm still here.
All right.
executive session regarding litigation. So I just want to remind everybody, the next council meeting is a study session, October 5th at 6:00 PM, and we will be joined by the planning commission for the public, if they would like to sit in on that. I'm sure they'll find that interesting. And that is it for the evening.
Madam Mayor, may I please recuse myself from your closed session?
Absolutely, so we have a.
Executive session.
Closed session, yes, for closed session. All right, which is happening after I adjourn. So with that, we are adjourned.